The first matter on the agenda is Gary Bond.
We need your pledge and stuff to be politically correct.
Go through the pledge and reasons first.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gary, please yours here? You've got the board of health approval in Kada. Public hearing, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, open the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I'll set to go here. Any board members have any questions? Everybody still aware what's going on with the outline change? Pretty straightforward. He's taking care of everything, including the board of health approval on the property? That documented, remember to set to go. Is there any public comment relating to the outline change?
Yes, if you don't mean, then I'm gonna sue it.
Well, you got to come up to the podium and state your name so it can be on the record. They can hear you.
Tom Warner, Armenia. I'd just like to ask if the adjacent landowners have been, had their letters.
Yeah, they should have, that was part of the public hearing notice process, yeah. I would assume so?
Yes, they did.
Do they all got it?
Okay, as long as they have, we've been remiss in that a few times.
Not lately. All right. Any other public comment? Board members, anything, anybody, any questions?
It's pretty straightforward.
All set? Okay. Just a matter of, where is the signature part for this side? There is no sign off spot for the chairman. The chairman, now you're here. Not just planning, back to planning board. I'm gonna go ahead and just sign off on the planning board notes section, just leave it at that. Should supply something.
Could you, just for the record, could you just give a vote?
I'm sorry, yes.
To approve it.
Yeah, we do need a voice call. All in favor, I need a motion, give me a motion first to pass to approve the...
Yeah, after we approve it.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Okay, all set, Gary.
Okay, congratulations.
More congratulations.
Yeah. Dave, good to see you.
What I understand, I gotta file the account.
Yeah. Take care, Marty.
File it as soon as you can, because I'm not sure enough to take a look, but they expire, some of these will expire in a certain amount of time. So if you do it in a couple of days, you're fine, keep moving on. Don't let it sit. Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is, you mean the drive-in. John's have to recuse himself from...
So Julie's not here, Julie, does it matter?
Well, I guess we can table until, I think I just saw Julie walk by. We'll go ahead and table that until she gets there.
Sure.
I don't think we're gonna need her much, I mean, it's pretty straightforward what's gonna have to happen at this point.
Yeah.
It really comes down to the signage out there that you folks have, that's not on the site plan.
Yep.
It's not approved, and it's not compliant.
Yeah.
So those signs, you're either gonna have to bring those, take those signs down, get them out of use, or go to the ZBA to get a variance to go ahead and operate those signs. But we can't sign off and approve the site plan until one of those two happens.
And that's the only thing that's holding up the approval, right?
That's it.
That's it.
That's all I had, yeah.
I have the pictures, I believe, through the emails, Dave, that you were requesting for the bathrooms. Julie asked. Oh, Julie asked them. Yeah, that's great, yeah, you can submit those to Larissa, that'd be great. To Larissa, okay, and, yeah, so, the best thing to do is just go to the town board.
The ZBA.
ZBA, and then take care of the...
If you go to the Z...
You guys will still need to make a referral to the county planning board, and you still need to hold a public hearing on this. So it's not just the signs that have to be dealt with, there's procedural issues that have to be resolved and taken care of before they can issue approvals. I mean, it's just the standard stuff that you go through. Yeah, of course. I mean, there was gonna be an approval, I mean, a public hearing after, even if you approved it.
You're gonna look through the same process you would've gone, but you need to go through the ZBA to give your answers on that, or take the signs down.
Take the signs down, okay. Yeah, and I apologize on that, actually, for not following the procedure on the ZBA. Julie had one or two comments, which I'll let, if you walked in, Julie, you can talk about those. There wasn't a lot, so...
Yeah, my main comment, just to do with how...
Julie? You want the podium, you might come over here if you want, Julie.
Yeah, here's a close.
So my main comment has to do with where the restrooms are shown relative to the septic system underground, because what's shown on the revised plans doesn't match what's shown on the sketch for the health department. So that has to be sorted out.
Okay, so the sketch with the existing restrooms don't match?
Right, don't match what was shown to the health department. Right now, on the revised site plan, the structure for the restrooms are sitting on top of the septic system, where the sketch for the health department shows it being next to the septic system.
It's next to it, yeah.
So it just has to be corrected.
And there's the picture that I think you requested as well, so the septic system is to the left of this giant...
John, the other part of that is, you've got to show on the plans, we're gonna be approving, where everything actually is.
Right.
So there's a difference from what you're showing here and what the plans show, you need to do that, and also with the signs, for example, the ones that aren't approved, the ones that are taken down, or through other signs out there that aren't currently approved.
John Fenton came out and took, got analysis of the whole land and all the signage that's out there, and so it's all documented of what's out there, and it should be all on the site plan. This was, or the site plan was generated by our engineers, so I'm not sure why that's not correct. They came out and did the drawings on that.
Just to show you what I'm talking about here. Here, you can see the restroom is sitting on top of the leach field, and the pipe is coming across the leach field to go into the septic tank over here. I doubt very much that's actually how it's happening. This is probably over here more...
Is this still, is the leach still right here?
Yes.
Okay.
And I mean, this is, this is based on the drawing that was approved in 2007, so it may not have been built like that, but that's what has to get sorted out.
So the, if you can see these right here?
Yep.
Vero-tiles?
Vero-tiles.
Yeah, that's, that's the end of right here, but in, in, assuming the water dries out.
Right, so you'll just have to get together with your engineer to make sure what you're showing on the drawing matches what's there in reality.
All right.
Okay?
Sure. And that was the only thing, right, other than the signage?
Yeah, the signage...
I mean, John, if you want to take down the signs that are non-compliant, and then leave the signs that are compliant, and have your engineer put them on the plan, you know, the board can then move forward. So you're not delayed, and then you, if you've got some signs that you want to put up later, you can then go to the ZBA and try to get them to approve it, but you won't be delayed, you see what I'm saying? But it's your call whether you want to do that. Yeah. I'm not quite sure what's approved and what's not, actually, to be completely honest with you.
Well, I think at this point, what John Fenton gave you is not being approved and not compliant, and are those are your issue?
He sent us an email this afternoon, did you get that?
Yeah, I mean, we all just got it, so I haven't had the time to review everything.
He's pretty much listed out there what is not compliant at this point.
Okay.
So that's the ones you've got to deal with.
All right, so, let me...
You've got some thinking to do, how you want to...
Let me do a little bit of thinking about how we're gonna handle this. I mean, because you're CO, temporary CO, which John has said is the last temporary CO. I mean, you've got to have that conversation with him, whether it truly is the last one or not, but if it is the last one, it expires in August, you may want to take down the non-compliant signs, leave them compliant, get them on the site plan, go through the process, and get all that stuff approved before, you know, August. Before August, yeah. And then go and at your leisure, deal with the other signs. Doesn't a decision need to be made right now, or can I...
Well, you got to make it before it expires in August.
Of course, before it expires, but I mean, could it be by, you know, either tomorrow or beginning of next week, where we give you a decision about how we're gonna treat this?
I mean, well, the decision's gonna be either you took them down...
Yeah, yeah.
Or you go on to the ZBA.
I was thinking, I just didn't, I wanted to see what, when the ZBA meetings were, and maybe we'd be able to, if it was coming up next week, maybe we'd be able to see how that went, and then... And I'm not saying you do what I was suggesting, I'm just giving it to you as an option. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I knew that, yeah. And balance what you want to do. Exactly. All righty, so...
One other comment I had was that previously a bike rack was proposed, and now, I guess it's not proposed, and a bike rack is listed in the code as something that should be considered as part of site plan approval, so I don't know if the board wants to weigh in on whether having a bike rack there is important or not important.
Yeah, on the plan, it's not, you're not having a bike rack.
We're not having a bike rack, no.
I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, there's no bike rack.
All right.
So then we'll just, I'll be in touch as soon as possible with how we're gonna, you know, potentially either take everything down, like you said, and just move forward, and change the plans so that we can, and that will require another meeting, another time board meeting?
Another planning board meeting?
Planning board meeting, yeah.
Well, yeah, again, we're gonna have to have public hearings and everything else.
I mean, just this change that we're doing, can we just make the change and then move on to, okay?
Yeah, if you were to take those signs down...
Yeah, yeah.
And submit a site plan with everything that's on your property, on that site plan as it is, we're pretty much ready to move forward at that point.
Yeah, but keep in mind the referrals to the county, you know, it may take 30 days, I just don't know how long. We can ask them to excavate it as we have done in the past, you know, but we have no control over how long it takes. So if you're gonna make a decision, I'd make it sooner rather than later. Yeah, exactly. Because if you want to move forward, you know, we need to get the stuff into the county to get them going, so, and I think you're right, it probably would take only one more meeting, assuming all the plans are in order, they probably go to have a public hearing, and then have that meeting, and they'd make a decision, and, you know, we would prepare, just like we did last time, prepare a neck deck, and a secret resolution, and a cooler resolution, which would be very similar to the ones that we did last time. Okay.
It really comes down to you folks making your decisions as fast as you can, yeah.
Yeah, we'll make it, you know, by tonight or tomorrow. Be in touch.
I think it was just the neon signs, right, the interior lit signs, it was three...
Yeah, there's a bunch of different, there's at least five or six different signs, five. And it's a combination, and it involves height, it involves size, white, white, whatever you mean.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to...
A variety of issues. And again, that's a John Fenton building inspector issue, but we've got to have what's on the property, and it's got to be legal, and it's got to be on the site plan as it identified.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Delittara Allen property. Just a couple of things to cover real quick before you get started on, you got the visual stuff from George James, our visual consultant.
Yeah, I just got the comments.
Right. Yeah, he could, yeah.
Rhoda Kennedy from Deborah Burke Partners Architects, and Tom Harvey from Morris Associates. We received the comments from both Julie yesterday and George James a couple hours ago.
Okay, all right. So you haven't had a chance to review those, obviously, so...
I've had a chance to read them.
You did, okay.
Yeah.
Did you have any particular comments you wanted to make on those, or?
Nope.
At this point, okay. The biggest issue, obviously, with George James's visual analysis was the location of the SPO boundary lines on the paperwork that had been submitted, and where the boundaries actually are.
Mm-hmm.
Ends up putting the house, barn, within the SPO entirely versus in the past, which was within a small portion of it.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I don't know how you folks want to deal with that, but we're gonna have to sort of take a look at that part of it.
We worked, since the last board meeting, we worked with George James's office directly. We did not have access to GIS software. I believe the SPO boundary map is based, I don't know if those are tax lot boundaries, but our, we used our survey boundary to position the SPO line, and there's just a little bit of a discrepancy between our boundary, our survey boundary, and the overall vicinity map that the SPO is shown on, so we actually asked Mr. James to help us with that. So he returned CAD file, which we can use, because we cannot access the GIS data, to help us position it.
Okay. Do you have any ideas as to how you're gonna handle the situation with the SPO, or...
We have no interest in relocating the buildings. We've done an extensive 18-month research and design process, and every time you look at moving one of these buildings in another location, you open up another can of worms. You're disturbing, you're blasting, you've got steep slopes, I mean, we've been trying to figure out what is the right location. The locations where we're proposing them are a little bit of a natural level area up in this hill. Other level areas that would, you know, we want to choose a more level area to minimize the amount of blasting, because obviously if you blast, you're taking every tree out within that area, so we, my client wants to continue to farm the areas that have crops and have decent soil. Those happen to have some level area, so we're certainly not interested in putting the buildings in the middle of one of the farm fields. So we believe this is the right spot for drainage, minimizing retaining walls, minimizing blasting, and minimizing the impact on this piece of land.
Some of the points that George had brought up was, it looked like the pool in the barn were located on 15% slopes, and could they be slightly shifted to get them off the slopes into a more flat area? The pool looked like it, at least according to George, if you shifted it off the 15% slope slightly, it actually put it into an area where it was flatter and the trees was clear, it was already clear.
We've just, we, I can't tell, we have so many consultants on this project, we've been studying this, every contour, every, you know, two-inch interval, we've shifted that pool around, and we really feel like we're in the best location to minimize disturbance to the area.
So what's the rationale for not being able to move the pool, I mean, this is an example of what George was saying, just to move the pool slightly off 15% slopes to a flat area where there aren't any trees? I mean, what's the rationale for that, for not being able to do that?
I'm not sure that I...
I'm not sure, well, you know...
That there's an area where you don't have a slope and you don't have a tree, they're just, this, this is, I don't know if you saw the photographs of the existing conditions? It's a, it's a, it's a very, I think I included a photograph of the existing conditions with my response to some of the precedent images. I can certainly show you that here, but...
But just something you're gonna have to take up with George, and that's all, we have to respond to his comments, I guess, and...
I guess that we could... Yeah, although George said we could, you know, another option is to request a waiver, so if that's the case, then I would...
Yeah, I think, well, we need a chance, we just got these yesterday, today, actually, and we need a chance to go through them ourselves and get more of an idea of what's going on with the George's recommendations.
Yeah, but my suggestion would be just looking at what he's got here, that there are two important issues he's raising, one is that it's not in the SPO, that it's in the SPO, so the question is, if you can't take it out of the SPO, can you address some of the substantive concerns that he has about why it shouldn't be there? In other words, if you want a waiver from the SPO, why, is that okay? And then, secondly, with the, he's talking about the visual impact, you have a broad side, I mean, his language is that... That is a mass larger than the short side of Manhattan block.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you?
George says... The perceived mass of the barn and the house are seen as a single building 225 feet in length, that is a mass larger than the short side of the Manhattan block. So his concern visually is something that you would have to address, at least, I think for us.
We are doing our very best to try to locate these buildings. We've picked materials that, you know, there's cedar shingles on the roof, there's a couple of roofs that are standing seam, galvanized metal, both of which look very similar to when they weather the surrounding trees and tree trunks, at least in the wintertime. This property that my client has purchased has a tremendous amount of area that is in the SPO. Areas that are not in the SPO are primarily the farm fields, which they intend to continue to use for crops.
Rhona, were you able to do the drawing that shows the steep slopes? Maybe could we show that to the...
Sure.
...to show sort of what George was talking about?
The overall, sorry, I missed the word.
What was George shot in the...
The picture was from the, I think from down the driveway.
Really only one area where you can see the property. We provided a map of that, driven up and down Smithville Valley Road, see if there's any other spots where you can see the property. And, or, just...
And from where you can see it, from Smithville Road, what's the angle you're sitting here?
Let me get this diagram.
That's where George shot it from? Same location?
Oh, it's actually the image we shot. So if you can see, there's the, I'm sorry, there's the road. Okay, so we took the photograph from here, looking up. There's quite a bit of topo here, so this bar, this hill here, once you move north on Smithville Valley Road, that's it, you can no longer see, at least this portion, you can see the ridge for the north, but you cannot see to this elevation. And then there's also a substantial hill here, which you're beginning to see the contours of. So when you're south on Smithville Valley Road, again, you don't see, so we picked this photograph because, you know, basically from here to here, you can imagine that would be like from here to just past the driveway, you can actually get a glimpse of the buildings. And we did, you don't see the pool more, you don't see the poolhouse at all, it's so low, and it's been positioned so that it is parallel to the contours.
So, so this, this drawing shows, this is the edge of the SPO, so you can see the barn's in the SPO, part of the house is in the SPO, the pool is not in the SPO. Then the shading shows the different steepness of the land, so the darkest is the steepest at above 30%, and this one's between 15 and 30%, and then the white is less than 15%. So, you know, if there were any way to slide the barn over to here, so then it's not in steep slopes, or slide the pool one way or the other, so it's not on steep slopes, that's some of the things that we were thinking about. And then, right, this is the tree clearing that they provided, and you can see that they have tucked the pool into this already cleared area. I don't know if there'd be a benefit to, you know, either sliding it off the steep slopes or sliding it further into...
It seems like that with this piece of property, as I said, it's always gonna be something. You're always either gonna be observing the steep slope, there's gonna be trees that are existing, there's gonna be the SPO boundary, so what we've tried to do in the position of these buildings is to be very, very careful about the impact of drainage, we want to minimize retaining walls, we want to minimize blasting, this is all rock up here, and, you know, as you can see from the photo simulation, we're really not taking that many trees out, I put some of the, as many trees as we're taking out, planning to put them back, I don't know if you had a chance to review the precedent imagery, but...
It's tricky, though.
In the end, once the project has been backfilled and the plantings begin, that a lot of the trees are coming out of the door.
Who's gonna be seeing any of this on this here?
What's that?
Who's gonna be seeing any of this from that? No one.
Neighbor to the south.
Yeah, and they won't be able to see it.
They can see some, there's a, you can begin to see, there's another big hill in here, so it actually really blocks their view as well.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, this currently, right now, this here is clearing, and it's suitable for crops. So, you know, as those contours get bigger, you can see that some of the, really isn't a level area, this is one of the most level areas here.
This is when we did the master plan, we were always concerned with certain things like this, where the SPO would lie, especially if you're being concerned and sensitive to the whole project.
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, from the beginning, you guys came in and said that.
Yep, they're doing this extensive, careful restoration of the banks along the stream, they've got soil specialists that have...
I remember.
Have had specialists, they've got a meadow consultant, I mean...
So you're essentially saying that the buildings won't be visible from any point hardly except for that one narrow swath?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so that, you're considering the height of the buildings and everything?
How about that 225-foot figure? Do you disagree with this assessment?
I don't disagree, no. What, obviously, as you see, you look on these buildings, you see both the house and the barn, the reason for those being positioned in that way is because it minimizes disturbance when you build parallel to contours, if you were to build a perpendicular to the contours, you're talking about blasting out a huge part of the hill in order to bury it...
Less tree removal, too.
And then putting the rest of it on stilts, because it's gonna be sitting at like...
Yeah, I think George's comment, I think, is to slide the barn over, since it's behind the houses.
The problem then is, we're gonna have to push it even further into the hill in order to get maneuvering systems for vehicles, you know, so garage here, and we've got parking here, and the extra cars will probably go...
Get more in steep slopes.
Get more into steep slopes, we're getting more into blasting.
I would add that that barn's been kind of pushed down into the hill, where the back wall is a retaining wall to the barn, so it's being buried in the hill.
And fits.
We're trying to, you know, we have to blast a little bit right there, just to get the foundation in, so push the barn down into the hill.
So now, when you were laying at the driveway, did you do alternate driveway layouts to, you know, maybe cut across this narrower piece of the 30% slopes as opposed to this much longer piece of the 30% slopes?
Just so the board is aware, and many of you guys are aware, that you have steep slope regulations, and there are restrictions, different kinds of restrictions for the type of slope, so your code breaks it down like 15% slope and 30% slope. So on 15% slope, your code basically says that, you know, development is allowed, but the cutting of trees and shrubs and other natural vegetation has to be minimized, and then there's a variety of other standards in there that are applicable as well, and then your code says that on 30% slopes, disturbance is not allowed, except in a number of situations, and one of those situations is where an applicant can demonstrate that there is no feasible alternative, and that the impacts of any land disturbance will be fully mitigated by engineering, erosion control, and visual impact mitigation. Okay, so that's the legal standard that you guys have to follow in here, so the arguments that the applicant is making, the arguments that George is making, you're gonna have to see how to kind of fit into those little standards.
If I could add to that, this gray patch is essentially a moat of 30% slopes around the house, that as you can see, we have no choice but to cross, and where we're crossing it, we kept retaining walls along both sides of the driveway to minimize impact.
We're also being very careful about stormwater runoff and making sure that that's mitigated on the side.
Is there any way to mitigate the visual impact if you don't move the buildings?
Additional plantings? No, I mean, visual impact seems to me that it's been minimized to the farthest possible.
Something I'd be curious to take a look at, is possibly taking a ride up there and verifying, there's only one point, how long of a swath is that you're driving through where you're seeing it? You're talking quarter mile, fifty mile?
Maybe...
Hundred feet? If you're talking one spot in any three where...
In that image there where the trees are missing in the second image, is that the location of the house? Is that...
Can you find the house?
I cannot, no.
I mean, we're really trying hard to minimize the visual impact, so...
Those are the large trees that Mr. James took...
Those are the large trees that we talked about, I think, for the first time we came here, it's a basic species, it's been kind of left together, two of them together, you begin to take a few out, there's definitely some danger of, you know, there's a whole lot that are already falling over, so once you start taking those out, it'll stand and come down.
Is the house represented as this massive sort of gray color, or, I mean, where is the house?
It works better in color.
Okay, because, yeah, it's a black and white photo, so it's sort of...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't have any color photos. I submitted color photos to the copies for each of you. Actually, Mr. Gaines made a comment that the removal of that stand of trees, we saw a positive thing, because that sort of destroys the original, what it looked like before it was planted.
That is the location then of the barn and the house, where the trees are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. It would be in the letter. One of these two, it's our, thank you.
Oh, this.
Just take a bite of it, probably be a good visual to see.
Is there a field then also behind the house?
So you can see that the house will be in the front, and the barn just in the back. Um, there isn't really a field behind the house, it's all.
What is that light color then, that looks like a, a grassy meadow up back behind that?
Um, no, I don't, I think that that's just, uh, the intent of the building.
Oh, is that the roof line?
Mm, yeah.
So that whole thing there is the building?
Oh, okay.
Well, so the building, the building has two roof lines that run parallel, if you look at that. So the building is actually made up of two roof lines, third one that's standing, and then you see the barn. So you're actually looking at one, two, three, and it's roof lines.
And it looks like one, yeah, that's what he's trying to point out.
Looks like one because you're so far back that when you're looking through the trees.
It seems like if you did move the barn, if you swapped the parking lot with the barn, you'd have more of a New England kind of courtyard feeling. And then you would take the barn out of the SPO, and then the park, it would only be the parking area that would be in the SPO. And then you wouldn't have the whole mass, you know, the two hundred linear feet of, and then you'd also be gaining more of a quaint kind of courtyard feeling by having, you know, the barn.
So they would be able to back out of the driveway, really?
Well, no, it would be better because the cars would be where the barn is, so you'd actually have more space to maneuver in and out of the parking areas. And then the barn would be out of the SPO altogether, and then you would.
All right, let's, I wanna back up, the SPO, I mean, I wanna go up there and take a look, if we're only gonna see that, that building in a hundred foot swath on Route eighty-three, the, the visual impact is, and that's just mitigated by the contour of the lands and everything else. Um, I wanna, I wanna look at George's right up close, of course, I haven't had a chance to read it yet, you know. And, um, I would mind going up there and taking a look at that, just to see if that's what we've got, if that's the case, then you have the way to waive the requirements of the SPO if you so desire.
Would you request that you waive them, because as I said, regardless of the opinions of the board in terms of what the courtyard should be and whatever weightness, we studied these very, very carefully.
It's pretty constrained, okay.
These are, you know, you, you, you're always gonna open another can of worms now where you, these buildings are, this is a, apparently a hardship site.
I'm gonna tell you right now that I find it very unpersuasive, I mean, regardless of all of the facts of the case, to ask for a waiver and to say regardless of the opinion of the board.
Well, I apologize, I certainly didn't mean regardless of the opinion of the board, I meant just in terms of the courtyard, and how the courtyard could be improved by, I've only meant that specific issue. Regardless of the opinion of the improvement of the court from a design experiential standpoint, that is what I meant by that, apologies.
What is the distance between, um, the barn or the house and the, the auto lot, where you have the, are you showing the cars part?
Um, it's about, uh, fifteen to twelve, it's about twenty feet, twenty-five feet.
That's, seems like a pretty tight spot to be.
It is gotta be, which about, you mean, are you talking about this direction?
Um, yeah, exactly.
I think it's gotta be about forty-five feet, I have a scale, it'd be more than probably more than forty-five, fifty feet.
I mean, yeah, s- seems like you could improve it quite a bit by swapping those, but.
I don't want to sit here and try redesign the whole project.
I mean, that's, it's not really redesigning, it's just taking the barn out of the SPO and moving the cars to a more sort of logical location.
Yeah, they're gonna be recommended, yeah.
So even when you're at the house, you're not looking at the cars, it's just, you know, cars are sort of obtrusive, it seems like a simple.
I think a lot to choice to make, they don't want to look at cars in their house.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, but it's, you know, just to take, take the barn.
I mean, my concern with the SPO, if we're, if we're gonna see it from the highways, if somebody's gonna see it as the SPO is intended to protect, it's an issue. If that's not it, then the SPO is not that.
But if those two are switched, then it wouldn't be an issue, right? Then you'd be taking the barn out of the SPO altogether, then it's not an issue, right? Isn't that what we're trying to mitigate?
What they're saying, I think, that they're gonna have a hard time doing that.
So, in addition, you know, they, uh, request waivers for the SPO, and also for the steep slopes, those things have to be, you know, balanced. Is it better or worse to be in the SPO versus on the steep slope, or, or how that's all going to play together?
Well, I would tell you that you have the ability to waive the SPO requirements, you do not have the ability to waive the steep slope requirements. The other thing is that, I would say, if you wanna leave some of the buildings in the SPO, there's, as you know, there's a variety of standards, there's architectural standards, landscaping standards, and other standards, you should probably provide the board with some analysis as to which standard you can meet, and which standard you cannot meet, and therefore, why you should be entitled to a waiver. So this way, we know, we've got in the record, all the standards in the SPO, which ones you wanna meet and which ones you don't wanna meet, rationale for that.
Does anybody else wanna take a ride up there and take a look at that?
Yeah, I do.
I'll pull some, we can get everybody up, do you mind?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so with the steep slopes, did, did you take a look at, instead of crossing the thirty percent here, coming this way?
Yep, we did try that.
But didn't you say there's wetlands, there's a lot more wetlands or something, or there was some kind of wetland you were saying?
There are.
That you were worried about to cross, right? That's what you couldn't, that was down below maybe?
And then, assuming that, you're, you're doing it through the tree line so that you can screen the driveway?
That's part of it, and it also lines up better without too sharp curves.
This ended up being really, uh, very steep.
Oh, yes.
I think that would have been harder for the fire department.
All right, sorry, are you, are you gonna be meeting all the thirty percent slope criteria that Dave just referred to before as far as the mitigation goes and the erosion control and?
Yes.
We have, we have lines swales, we have recable walls through that area, I'm not sure what other mitigation.
Exactly.
They have to go through the code, you, the code.
Is that, and again, yeah.
We, we do have all those measures.
All right, if you're gonna keep the, some improvements on the steep slopes, it might be helpful, again, to provide the board with documents showing why you meet each of the standards for the steep slopes.
Right, why it's the, why this is the least impact scenario. Which, you know, and showing this, I don't think you could see this before, but showing how this driveway follows the old path, that was very helpful for me, seeing how that goes. And then, uh, I believe you're talking with the fire department about the dry hydrant?
They've actually sent the letter of approval for the layout of the dry hydrant, and we have provisions for, for the site.
And then, and they want us to have a pool, they're gonna use the pool for?
We do intend to be able to provide, um, access for, uh, water to the fire department, exactly how we're doing that is still.
Okay, so you're still working on it, okay, and then.
Is that something that you think you'd be able to work out by the next meeting, so you could just identify it on the plan as to how that's gonna be, or not?
We're, we're talking plumbing the pool, I'm not sure we'll be that far in the pool design, exactly. Um, at this point, you plan on operating, exactly how it's gonna be formed, that's supposed to be.
Okay, so you will provide it, and just how you do it is still gonna figure it out, okay.
I think we're seeking a letter of approval from the fire chief.
Yes.
Yeah, although he, he said, let us, keep us in the loop as to how you're gonna solve the pool issue, that's why Julie's asking.
Well, we have the plumbing details, we, they will definitely provide the plumbing details, I mean, it is a, it is at that level of detail.
But the issue is that you are providing it, so that's, I think that's all the board needs to know.
And he also said he was satisfied with just the dry hydrant upon, but we wanted to.
Yeah.
I, I had a question on that, um, because on the specs for that, it says that you're gonna dredge twenty feet around the, the intake pipe. Now, is that pipe in a wetland, is that pond a federal wetland?
It is a federal wetland, but my understanding is the removal of material permit is, doesn't inform it, replace material into it, that would be a permit.
Well, you should double check on that, because any excavation in a wetland, fallback rule, when, when soil falls back in, um, during the excavation, it's typically considered to be filled. Um, you should just check on it, just to make sure that that's covered, because you have an existing permit from the Corps.
Yeah.
Um, just, this was added after that, so I'm just saying, just check to make sure that that's okay, covered by the existing Corps permit.
Yeah, we did check with our well and consultant on that, and we said that we still consider.
It was good.
It was good.
And a permit remover would be deposited significantly up slow away from the all these.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a question whether you're within that acreage disturbance line.
Yeah, please that our permit would cover it.
Okay, good, good.
So, what name person could just write that I took forward, saying that you've value that, you've, you've stayed in each one for hours, and. And then, have you gotten help department approval for the main house yet, or is that still?
No, we just submitted that, so another, that's a little off.
Okay, so I want to get that, and see if that, I don't know.
You guys done with the cottage, did you get a CO for that and everything, or?
Um, I don't think the CO was actually granted, I just, uh, got it, gave it work, the taxes, so.
But it's close.
It's very close, I just waited, I guess that's all.
Okay, okay, good.
So.
Something going forward, all right, um, I think, go ahead.
Next steps are to, you're gonna take a drive out there.
Uh, one, one of you'll hold it up, if that's okay, and try to set that up with your folks, so that, you know, when we're coming out, and, uh, make sure we've got it, if you have any questions, you can ask them like that, I guess.
Okay.
Be just a couple of us, two or three of us. All right?
And your next board meeting is on July seventeen, July third, July thirty, seventeen. I'm just, um, we're really hoping to start, uh, you know, just in terms of the, by the, and getting this started before the, or something.
So your board of health approval is gonna be a month and a half.
Yeah, but I mean, in terms of this approval process, when you come out and you visit the site, you, you look at this together, submit the document from our well and consultant.
And the SPO waiver?
Yeah, and request the SPO waiver, I mean, coming back to do a full consultation.
I'm gonna ask Julie, how are you setting as far as the comments that you've had?
Uh, I think pretty well, um, the, the big question is how the board wants to, uh, deal with the SPO, and if there's any benefits to shipping things around, you know, the store, sort of the SPO. Um, and then, you can ask the senior, the health department approval, and it does not include the county, the common hearing, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think it does have to go with the county, because you're making changes right along the county highway, from the gate, changing the, the driveway, and, I mean, I don't think they're gonna care about any of that, but I've still gotta go to the county, and that's up to them as to how long they take.
What I'm thinking, it'd be tough to pull it all together by the third, but, um, the second meeting in July, we could probably, might be able to. I think what a lot of it comes down to, if we, if we do, take a drive up there and see, see what the resume, and we'll just have to make a decision as a board as to what we're gonna require with the, um, house location, barn location, and so forth, and the SPO.
I would, I would note, just for procedural, that when you do go on a site visit, you're allowed to do that, um, as a board for gathering facts, and it's not a violation of the open meetings law. But if you go up there and deliberate, and you make a decision, you can't do that, you actually gotta come back here to the meeting, discuss.
But we can all go up there.
You can all go and you can look at it, gather facts, but then you gotta come back to the meeting and then have a discussion with that.
Yeah.
All right.
Good, good. So we might have to do two skill tests, or that's good, we can do that.
So we do it one.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, one, one.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I feel like this is all sounding a little open-ended, and I just wanna make sure I understand the timeline, um, because my client is gonna wanna know, what are the next steps?
What we got, we got twelve, we got twelve days to bring down the third. Um, for us to go up there and take a look at what the, uh, the SPO impacts are, I think it's pretty cut and dry, we can do that with them, you know, we can do that with them next week. At that point, we can come back, um, we can't decide on that until the next meeting, it's gonna be the third, as to what the outcome would be of that trip. And let's say that there needs to be changes made at that point, that the board can't come to an agreement and waive the SPO, and I can't predict what's gonna happen. Then we go, I'll just hope next week we have this. And can't be referred to the county and, um, set up for public hearings, so you've got everything submitted and finalized, is that correct?
Yeah, and if you guys come to a consensus at the July third meeting, then you can refer to the county and you can just do, you do a normal process.
Get that process started.
But if you feel that changes can be made up there and should be made up there, then they're gonna have, have to come back and, you know, give you your set of plans, and then if that's acceptable, then for.
Can I see your set of plans again?
Thank you.
Let's just kind of pick that around amongst ourselves right now, because, anyway, some, you know, I'm, I'm of the opinion, if it, if it is a hundred foot swath or so, a small area of eighty-three, that's gonna, where you can see that, that house and barn location from, and that's, if that's all it is, I'm not gonna be overly reactive on the need to move the house and barn and change everything around if they've already got established, that's my opinion.
Mine too, yeah, no, I agree.
I agree.
I'd like to see it.
Oh, I wanna see it also, and then I wanna ver, I wanna verify.
I don't know, a hundred, a hundred foot.
Two miles.
It really depends, it's almost subjective depending on your impression, I mean, his, his analysis is, is using this metaphor of the Manhattan block, and so that sounds scary, so I wanna see what that looks like.
Yeah, Manhattan block in a rural area has a, it's a different meaning.
Yeah, country mile.
Manhattan blocks are actually really short blocks.
I just happened to notice, I'm looking at this map too, is that the angle, when you're looking from the road, has the barn almost half, half block already by that house, in what I can see. I'll just have to, stand here looking at it, I figured, I'm not always.
And then you have your SWIP done for the whole project?
So done for the whole project, we've incorporated stuff for the cottage, and for the garage, and for the cottage, and then you're gonna do the rest.
So you can submit that as part of the town's version control, or?
You need the full SWIP book, submit?
Uh, yeah, uh, unless you wanna write a supplement or to meet the, the board's, what's in the town code.
All right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll like to say, well, I will either give you a summary of the law or a proposal.
No, just because it's the version control and the, during the.
Gee, well, especially with the, the issue that creates as well. All right, so I think, I, I think with a general consensus, that the, uh, if there's not a large part of eighty-three we're gonna be seeing, where you would see the house location fund, there probably wouldn't be any problem from the board's own perspective, but again, we gotta go see, see that for ourselves first. As far as the steep slopes, I mean, if you can, um, mitigate to what the, uh, standards are in the zoning law, that, um, that'll take care of the steep slope issues on thirty, uh, thirty, thirty percent grade, um, is there anything else in the, in the drive, Julie, that you had concern with? I know the fifty percent portion, same thing.
On the driveway, uh, you know, they, they were related to a few questions about the driveway that submitted, and then the response from the fire department.
Fire department's all set, yeah, please do.
Did you have a concern about how some of the plans, a little bit inconsistent or something?
Yes, that, yes, some of the plans show that.
Should maybe we get that?
One that, one of the pull offs is shown on the left side of the road, with the right side of the road, the left side of the road are separate, so just, which one is that, and have them consistent? It's in the, uh.
Can I make it feel a little more solid for you?
Yeah.
So we'll be in touch this week, um, well, maybe tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you for preparing the drawings for me.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Do you want me to re印 this, which you do, or?
Um, I don't know, the planning board members, we want to bring it with them.
Julie asked me to just quickly reprint these for today, uh, since I've got them.
Yeah, so, yeah, the drawings in the set show the steep slopes, but without the SPO, so it's a lot of flipping back and forth, so I figured for tonight, it was helpful to be able to have everything in that drawing. A, a little busy, but again.
It is still challenging, because we're all on the.
It is, but I think it, um.
So we can arrange it to travel.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, you, these are two copies of the manual sheet.
All right, great, thank you.
Would you like this one back?
Yes.
This, yeah, this one's here.
Did you want this back also? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, last but not least, we have Sible Ridge. Did you folks wanna start, you want us to start?
Uh, sure, either, either way.
All right.
So, first, we wanted to thank the board, uh, all the board members who were able to come to our meetings with the consultants, that was. to our meetings with the consultants, that was extremely helpful. I know it's a lot of hours we spent, but we were able to clarify, I think, the vast majority of the comments, and we're in the process of, of answering all those and submitting those this week and next week.
And just for the public's note there, essentially, um, there were meetings held at the Silo office between every consultant and several board members at each meeting, planning board members. The purpose of those meetings was to take every consultant's comment, every page, every comment, go through it one at a time with the consultants, and come to an agreement between Silo and the consultants and the planning board members there, as to how those comments would be addressed, if it'd be a fix, or it's not important, or, um, it's a long-term fix that's gonna need more discussion or policymaking process by the planning board. And what's currently being done is that all those comments are being charted out by the Silo staff, um, they're gonna be listing every comment, um, and what the response was by the consultants and the planning board as to what needs to be done. Once that's all completed, they're gonna give those packets back to the consultants, let the consultants review those, to see if what they wrote for the read upon remedy is as the consultants remember them, and then we'll get those packets after that, then we'll resolve, so that we can see the comments again and what the resolution was to each comment, the final outcome. So that's where we're at with that.
Perfect.
Alright.
So, like I said, it was extremely helpful, uh, we were able to, I think, resolve ninety-nine point nine percent of the comments, so it's very good, and now our consultants are working to make sure that, uh, we're able to comply with all the requests from the, from the town consultants. So I think, uh, we had, uh, one, I think, one open item from the last meeting, which was, you know, regarding the bonding, uh, we received back the, a new estimate from Julie Magarillo, and, uh, I think with regards to the estimate, I think part of the estimate we happens to be, we happen to be in agreement with, actually, the estimate prepared by VHB on our behalf was higher with regards to labor and equipment. Um, our concern still is with regards to materials. Um, uh, we have quotes, uh, following New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and we have the, you know, the quotes for buying materials locally, and they're drastically lower than what's being proposed.
Alright, and what we wanted at this point is come up with a figure of what the bond and need, reclamation bond's gonna need to be, so we can get that bond put in place and get everything satisfied, um.
One thing that we would like to ask the board if they will consider rather than placing a bond, if, if we put the total amount in a restricted account with the, with the town.
And I think the, the board discussed that, I know Dave, our attorney, has spoken with the town's attorney as to how that would be packaged basically, you know, you wanna speak to that, Dave, or?
Yeah, and in the last meeting you had indicated that your preference was to post basically cash, um, and, uh, you know, but obviously that's fine under the zoning code, but I think we would need to have an agreement, and that's for agreement, um, you know, between you and the town, so it was clear as to how the funds would be extored and you had it had to be used, and those kinds of things, so.
Is this, is this stuff, that's something that you should prepare, or we should have our council prepare?
Uh, we can do it, um, and because it deals with the town attorney who's gonna coordinate it, her, then we'll send it to you guys, you guys can comment on it, and if there's change you want, you know, we can, and work it out.
That, that's probably easier and probably much efficient.
Okay.
Now, how far apart were your numbers from Julie's numbers with the new figures you've got?
The final number that VHB came about, um, the, VHB was using RS means for labor and equipment, and they were using actual quotes from crop production and other providers around here, they came to sixty-six thousand. The, um, RSA, which is Roy, Soik and Andrews, their new estimate was a hundred and twenty-one thousand. And like I said, the, uh, under labor and equipment, even using prevailing wages, our estimate was higher, uh, our estimate was twenty-nine thousand against, uh, twenty-five thousand from Roy, Soik and Andrews, um, the biggest difference was really materials.
Seed?
Yeah, which is essentially seed, uh, mulch, and hydro seeding, which is a different type of mulch, as well as it needs to add tackifier, as well as, uh, we had put in allowance for erosion control blankets as well.
Alright, so at this point, you folks are still sixty thousand apart, basically? Am I correct?
Basically, and it, it all comes down to the material cost.
Right, right. The easiest way I thought about as far as trying to get the resolution on this was to, um, crop productions is where they got their numbers from for materials, and my thought was just going to crop productions, um, I know several of the guys that worked there, and talking to them about what the cost would be, verifying the cost, and then making adjustments from there.
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing, um, maybe from, from Julie or from the board members who are at the meeting, uh, what happened, you know, why did it come down, and what that reflects, and then what the difference reflects if it's something substantive or not.
Yeah, and again, to make it part of that, was, was it on the labor, there were four thousand, it's not even four thousand now, it's even less than that, I guess.
So my, my first estimate that I did, I estimated prevailing wage, for the second estimate, I actually went through the prevailing wage documents and pulled out the actual prevailing wage, hourly labor costs, and compared that to numbers put out by the Dutch County, um, annual rental machinery and equipment for the cost for the equipment, so that's where the labor and equipment came from. Then for material, I also called around to contractors I know, compared it to other bids for jobs in Dutch County, and, and got a bunch of numbers. Typically, for seed mulch, I use six cents a square foot, for this, I lowered it to four and a half cents a square foot. Um, the number Silo Ridge is using is just over a penny a square foot, but, uh, as I wrote in my cover letter, the estimate that we prepared is just an estimate based on the numbers and the information we can get, it's not the only number, if you go to different, you know, seed distributors, you'll get a different price for everything, this is why, you know, projects have bids to get different prices from different contractors, so the number that I've come up with isn't the one and only cost that it could possibly be, it's, um, what, you know, based on my research, the number that I've found.
Well, I like, I like when Norm said going to local here, just to find out, that'd be, that's great to keep it local anyway.
Yeah, then two things we did, we had the numbers that VHB prepared, where from, I guess, again, from RS means, construction cost database, multiplied by the local multiplier, we, you know, I have prepared, and I gave a copy to Norm Fontaine, with, and he has a backup of all the receipts we have, as well as, we prepared essentially an estimate of what it would cost per, you know, following the requirements of New York State DC and local pricing here, and it came, it was actually cheaper than what was proposed by VHB.
Okay. So what's that? So this alternative account, um, sorry, what was the name for, for it, Dave?
They just posted cash, there's, pardon cash, it's gonna go into a cap that's controlling the town.
Is that, is that, is that an account that you would still be able to accrue interest on then, 'cause I know that was one of your concerns, is the interest on the money?
Um, at this point, I'm not so worried on the interest in the money, uh, my concern with posting a bond is twofold, one, there's a cost associated with it, and the second one, which is one of the ones why I'm, uh, I would be more concerned with is, surety companies nowadays require that every single contractor working there has to be, provide also a performance and payment bond, and most local contractors won't be able to meet those requirements, so it would eliminate the ability for us to use a lot of the local contractors. Uh, we would like to keep using the local contractors we're using.
Of course, they would have to be bonded?
Yeah.
Well, again, keep in mind, we're talking two different parts here, one's the golf course work reclamation bond, then the other bond we would need to talk about is the bond's gonna be used for all the infrastructure work, driveway, or the roads, the, the figure plant, the, or, right now, we're talking about just the reclamation for the golf course properties, what's been in this, this figure here, just for the golf course.
And, and again, the, 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 by, part of the reason why we feel more comfortable just placing the cash in interest-bearing account with the town is, we have the flexibility to keep and using our local contractors, but if something were to go, uh, in a different pattern where the town would have to come in and, and reclaim whatever we left open, then they could use the money as they fit. So, so it protects, I think it protects the town, it allows us the flexibility to keep and using local contractors, and there's no cost to us, 'cause at the end of the day, we, we'll have them, you know, once we finish the golf course construction, then we get, we get our money back.
Sure.
So, like I said before, I mean, they're on the labor, the material, labor and the equipment, they actually come in higher than Julie's figure, like five thousand.
Yeah, the, the number that VHB used in their revised, um, estimate, I'm assuming it's the one that Amanda had in the last meeting.
Yeah, it, it wasn't, it wasn't the estimate that was provided by our contractors.
Right.
It was, it was the, this is VHB's estimate.
Right, so that, so Amanda just took the number I had from my first estimate for labor and materials, and just used that same number.
Alright.
For my second estimate, I went through it, instead of just estimating prevailing wage, I went and got the actual prevailing wage, so.
Okay.
That, that's where that difference is.
Pretty close.
So, the real disagreement here comes into play with the, um, materials, and the process of getting the materials out there. So that's what I'm looking to go to crop production, basically, and saying, Joe, what's it gonna, what's it gonna cost if you folks have to do it? That's where they got their figures from, so if they coincide, and I'm finally going, I'd love to be the same figure they've got, I guess it'd probably be slightly higher, but it's not.
Right, the idea is if you were to buy it off the shelf, so to speak, you know, obviously, local, um, businesses, you know, wanna have a good relationship with Silo Ridge, so there's incentives to give better pricing, so it's, you know, the idea is just, so to speak, somebody walking in off the street and, and buying it.
Okay, so, so also, the other, the other thing that we should be aware is the, again, VHB prices are higher than the prices we quoted on materials. So, then the other thing is, we, we still have a ten percent contingency added to those, all those numbers.
Does anybody else have any other suggestions on how to approach this, or, I mean, that's, that's my thought?
We're looking at sixty-six again for the VHB new estimate, and one twenty-one, seven thirty, seven thirty for the RSA estimate, and we're thinking if we go to crop production, we can create a figure that's our own.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Things like labor and equipments on target.
Perfect.
Just a matter of figuring out the material locations. Everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
Alright, so I'll go ahead and get that done.
I had a, a separate question, and the, the SPO waiver that planning board granted, um, you know, for the, the rest of the golf holes that you guys are gonna do, um, they require you guys to address the comments from Dr. Clemens and Julie, which were all dated May fifteenth, I assume you guys are gonna address those when you get ready to start doing that work, or maybe the better question, what's your, what's pining on, when you figure you're gonna get to addressing those comments?
So the comments with Dr. Clemens pertain to the work that was permitted in December, there was no comments today with regards to the new work, and Julie's comments, I believe, um, uh, Amanda from VHB was addressing those within the general permit, and what, and I don't know if they send you the revised SWIP or not.
No, I haven't.
Alright, so we'll make sure, we haven't started our job, but we'll make sure that, before we start, we submit all those comments to.
Yeah, I figured we weren't close to that yet, but, um, you know, that's a good idea, if you just submit a letter in response to this, so we've got it in the file, and we can say, yeah, they responded to all the comments, and it's like this, and.
Correct.
Do you have any idea what kind of timeframe you're looking at to get the review of the comments from the consultants, including?
Right now, we, it looks like we're eighty percent done with the plans.
Nice.
We just wanna make sure that there's a lot of coordination with a lot of different plans, we wanna make sure that, you know, we don't have any mistakes when we submit them. Uh, the comments are completed, uh, we didn't know if you guys wanted to receive the comments upfront, or receive all the comments and the plans.
Alright, so you've got, you've got the responses to the comments already charted out?
Yeah, yeah, that's all done.
I wouldn't see any harm getting that out, and when people start to study.
The only thing is, a lot of, for example, on Julie's comments, ninety percent of them are with regards to the plan, we're saying we made, we made the change.
Well, that's okay though, but I, I think, I think with the planning board members are gonna wanna know though, is if there was an issue, this is the comments, the consultant's comment, it was looked at by Julie, it was agreed upon, I mean, I think what's more important right now is getting those comments back to the consultants, and making sure that they're in agreement with what you folks.
Well, like, like Pedro was just saying, is that if their response to my comment is revised drawing, I'm not gonna know that till I get the revised drawings.
Right, so, well, at least we can get them back to the board members, and see if everybody's okay with what was discussed and agreed upon, and then we'll have to wait for the consultants to get back to us and let us know whether it was done as it should have been.
Well, yeah, we won't be able to do that fully until we get the revised drawings.
But we should, we, we should be able to submit the revised drawings either early next week, uh, we should be able to submit all the comments to you, probably, we can package them tomorrow, um, they are.
If you're gonna have the drawings early next week, I mean, ahead, just do it all in chat then, if you're gonna have it done that fast.
Yeah, so the, you know, so we'll submit the whole thing as a package, is there anything pending that we would need?
We'll have the visual.
Right.
Yeah, the visual's the only one.
So water and sewer will be in this submission then?
We'll have the, a, I guess, a draft of the water and sewer, 'cause the water and sewer technically cannot be complete until we get the full water report, okay. The good news is we're using the, the two wells that were in the old water report, so we're using that basis, but technically, our engineer is essentially saying, you know, it's not complete until you get the water.
But that shouldn't, you know, that shouldn't be affecting where you're going to be putting the pipes.
So all that will be in there, all that will be in there, so you'll have a layout, you'll have, uh.
Wait for the treatment plan.
Yeah, treatment plan's been completed, yeah, treatment plan, facilities plan's completed, the only one was the, it was the conveyance system.
Okay.
So that's all being, you know, there's certain revisions that have to be done with the, um, because of the, some of the grading changes we made with the, with the visual and all that stuff, so they're adjusting those, and you should be able to have that.
Alright, one of the questions, Dave, that came out of, um, the meeting with the visuals with George James, and this again, for the rest of the board also, um, one of the recurrent themes was that it could, in the finding statement, it has to be done, and, um, that's specifically related to the mitigated versus unmitigated, uh, viewpoints or shots. I guess the question is, what ability is there to change the findings, amend the findings if the board's in agreement that they're okay with certain things?
Yeah, I mean, you can amend the findings, and that's what we're doing, I mean, we're amending the findings on a variety of issues, um, but you have to have a rational basis to make a change to the findings, um, and, you know, you'll have to listen to what, you know, George's position is with respect to those unmitigated simulations, and this is what Pedro and his visual consultant has to say, and then, you know, make a decision on that, whatever decision you have has to have a rational basis.
Alright, I'm guessing maybe with that issue, then we ought to wait till George's gonna be here in order to discuss that part of it, 'cause the discussion involved, um, the need for the unmitigated visuals as far as, for comparison, and the mitigated shots, and, um, and there wasn't really agreement on that.
Yeah, I think, I think our concern with the unmitigated pictures is it will create a lot of confusion with the public, 'cause it's, essentially, is what you're doing is you're providing a rendering of what it will look if we clear everything, we put no landscaping, and you paint everything white, so it's, we believe they'll create actually more confusion than actually clarification.
Do you have a mitigated versus unmitigated shot, would you have any chance?
Yes, so one, one of the things we discussed was that, uh, that George suggested was that we prepared one shot for the planning board to review, and then, you know, then the planning board can make a decision, so that, that was our main concern, that it's gonna create more confusion than actually create clarification of what the, what the action's gonna look like.
Do you have, do you have any chance?
Uh, I don't have one.
Okay, alright.
It's a good point, though, I mean, you know, to, it is gonna cause confusion for people to have, you know.
I know in the past it did as well, so it's like.
Is everybody aware what the process is, and we're talking about, or just make sure?
I think so, I mean, I, I see what you guys are both saying, um, at the same time, people aren't unable to make distinctions, I would be interested in hearing why George's interested in this document.
Well, George, I mean, basically, I'll just relay what he was saying, what I think he was saying, we'll have to talk to him ourselves, everybody can, but, um, he was saying you can make comparison as to what it would be without the trees being planted, for example, in front of houses, unless you've got the houses without the trees, and then you've got the houses with the trees in front of them. Well, what the other side of the argument is, is once you put the trees in front of the houses, that's the mitigated, that's what you're requiring, you can't see the houses, so what are you, you know, what are you comparing? You're taking a shot where you can't see a house, and you're saying, this is what it would look like if you didn't have the trees, you've got a house there.
You guys approved the findings with this, um, this thing in, um, so you guys must have a reason why you put it in there initially.
I think it was actually Silo's, or I don't.
Yeah, it was us.
It was, yeah.
But those are all the things that need to be discussed with George here, you know.
Yeah.
Why was it put in originally, is that rationale still valid, should we change it, if we wanna change it, you know, what's the, why we changed it?
Well, that's where I got the reason from was George had said that it was Silo's.
Yeah, and the reasoning for why we did it in the past that way was there's no way for us to fully, for us to really say that. The trees were gonna be in the location that we're placing them in the picture. And the reason for that is there was no, we didn't have a site plan drawing for us to go render a landscaping plan. So the only way to accurately say, okay, the, the plants were gonna be in those locations was to do the step of showing the buildings without nothing and then photoshopping where the trees could have been. Now that, you know, that we have landscaping drawings, we have site plan drawings, we can actually go render each individual tree that has been on the, on the plan, you can actually see the action as is currently proposed. And unfortunately, it was something that we put in, 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 in the old visuals, it wasn't our requirement, it was just something we put in.
Another, another interest from that meeting with George James is for everybody, it came real apparent, real quickly at the beginning of the meeting, that one of the biggest problems, I think, between what George had to review and the critique he put together. He was working off basically visuals that had no final grading plans or the updated grading plans. It was old grading, so obviously when you get the finalized grades put into those pictures of what he should have had to work with, it would have looked totally different. So he was working off a totally different representation than what Silo's gonna be presenting at the end product, as an end product.
The visuals we present that had the grading that we have in the plans that we've been discussing, it's just he was looking at the old grading plan.
Correct, he thought you had to work, yes.
Us as the town consultants, we haven't received the updated grading plan yet, we still have the one from a few months ago. So comparing the grading plan a few months ago to the visuals which are based on the updated grading, they don't match. So that was, once we got that cleared up.
That raises a lot of confusion by the way. I think that pretty much covered. Pretty much covered everything I had to include. Do you have anything else that you wanted to bring up tonight, or?
No, I think, just to clarify, we'll, we'll make sure that Amanda follows up with Julie and answers all of her comments. We'll review again Dr. Clemens' memo, but I believe Dr. Clemens' memo pertained to the December approval.
I think it would still be worthwhile to write something in, saying that, you know, his comments are.
Just so it's in the file, it's been addressed, you guys addressed it?
I know that we, we've been implementing the mitigations you wanted, so, but we'll, we'll put that in there. And I think we're applying the same comments you had to the site plan drawings on the SWIP and all this stuff, so it was similar comments.
Yes, a lot of them are very similar.
Yeah, the questions from.
So with regard to the bonding or the reclamation?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll discuss it again at the July third meeting?
I'm gonna probably get something together real soon here and I'm gonna have, we'll just throw it out to the board members, so. Everybody can make sure you check your, check your emails and then I'll be formatting it so that we're looking for basically a response from everybody, yes, the affirmative or negative, I, I'm okay with this or I'm not. And if I'm okay with it, I can go ahead and throw that figure out to you folks and we can move on, okay?
I, I think one thing that should probably be clarified is, cause I think there was some confusion. The work with that is currently being done, we weren't required to put a reclamation bond. We acknowledge that now with the request to do the rest of the golf course, we'll be providing a reclamation bond and. Even if something was to happen within the existing golf work, the reclamation bond will cover that, but it's not like where we are pushing a reclamation bond out while we're making work, I just. I just wanted to clarify the issue, cause some people have had some concerns and came to me and said, what's going on, so.
Yeah, I think the bond covers what, thirty-five acres?
Right.
You know, so, there's a couple, all the work that you're doing, it just covers that, that amount, so.
The biggest amount that.
Correct.
How much work is done with that?
Excuse me?
How much work on that thirty-five acres, is it done or start, almost finished?
The thirty-five acres came about, cause was the largest area that was allowed under our SWIP.
So. How are you now, what you're working on now, are you almost done with that, or?
We are probably eighty percent done with the grading associated with the driving range. We're a hundred percent done with the grading associated with eleven, sixteen and seventeen. They're actually putting in drainage right now, we'll hopefully be seeding very soon, you know, grass seeding, you know, golf course seeding. And eighteen also should be done as, you know, as we finish the driving range.
I followed that to, there were two other things that came out of the visuals meeting, you know, day, and one was, I talked about needing basically some kind of visual showing the cut of the, on Delaware and Hill, the current cut of Delaware and Hill. So I asked for that, cause I'd like to see what it's gonna look like as a finished product, both on Delaware and Hill and also from the other big vantage point for that. For that viewpoint is King Stud, if you're coming down King Stud Road. And you can see, you can see both, you can see that area pretty well, so we're gonna call that to get it for us.
The good news is in the next, that will be done in the next week or two.
Okay.
So you'll be able to see what it looks like. You know, I know that some people had concerns that, you know, it was extremely steep and the, the way the contractor works as he's doing the grade. It's steeper at the beginning, but actually when they end up blending it, it's actually not that steep. So, but it'll be, it was surprising to me seeing how they worked and how they're now, you know, they have probably sixty percent of the bank already completed and it's not, it's not very steep anymore.
And the other part we discussed and again, something to consider, the plans have been calling for hedges and so forth, we're saying there will be a long Delaware and Hill around the corner. And that was actually to mitigate anything you might see below, whether it be golf course or buildings or whatever else. The more I look at it, the more I wonder if that's the best way to go, and if you put hedges, are you better off looking down and seeing a golf course that rolls along and a few houses here and there and buildings? Or you wanna block that off totally with hedges?
And just see the far off view.
And just see the far off view, I'm not so sure, I'd wanna put hedges there at this point. Silo's planning to, but I'm not so sure that's the best way to go.
That was the visual problem.
Yeah, we're, we're looking for direction from the planning board, you know, the, in the old plan, the idea was to block completely the hotel and block all the big buildings. Our, you know, our buildings are now much smaller, so you're actually seeing a lot less. The, one of the mitigations that we were proposing was rather than putting big trees and all this stuff, was just to put a hedge. And essentially you wouldn't see anything but some of the buildings way, way in the far. We're happy to do it either way, we just need direction from the board.
And then the other question I guess is, what happens if your mitigation is less effective or differently effective than you expect? How do you account for that beforehand?
I don't know if you can, you mean change it up after the fact, after it's all done?
No, I mean, when you're, when you're in the planning stage like we are now.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's why the, that's why it's critical now that we have the actual landscaping plan, we can render what that would actually look like. And part of the question that came out was, you know, do we wanna hedge there with the horse fens? Do we wanna use more natural shrubs looking type of thing up there, or do we want nothing and we don't care about seeing some of the, some of the buildings? So the direction we need from, from the planning board is which.
As you go around that chunk, you're really doing, it's always been this, it's always been, you know. It's where the King's, the King's Stud was always the visual part of everything anyway.
Yeah, the hedge wouldn't block you from seeing that way.
Bigger view.
The hedge wouldn't block you from seeing that way, the hedge would essentially just block you from seeing down towards, you know, where the existing clubhouse would be.
The King's, the King's Stud impacted, well, it wasn't the hedges, the King's Stud impacted is the cut in the hill. That's the only other place that you're gonna position yourself and see that cut without standing on top and looking down. If you go down twenty-two, you can see it, but you're kinda driving, you're, you're looking, you know, you're not gonna get a good visual if you're coming north, you can see it pretty good from the distance.
Even King Stud's fencing, you never see that.
Oh, no, I'm talking, no, I'm.
Well, I'm just saying from that.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about your at King Stud, looking at.
Oh, your at King Stud, yeah, yeah, right.
That's the viewpoint that I'm talking about.
Yeah, that, yeah, I'm looking at going around the hairpin turn, going, looking out, you know, and see the fence.
The vehicles were done from both.
Yeah, yeah.
So Norm, are you asking for visual simulation showing that view without the hedge? That, would that be helpful to you?
Well, that would be helpful, at this point I was just, I was wanting to throw it out to the rest of the board, because the more I look at it, the more, that might be the way to do it, I guess.
Well, I mean, they've already got the model built, so I think it's pretty simple to probably.
We, we can do the visual simulation without the hedge.
Alright, that'd be great then.
The last visual that we had from that perspective, it was kind of like a continuation of the vineyard, right? What was shown, I don't know if you had a species of tree picked at that time or hedge.
Yeah, they're, they're in the landscaping plan, we're actually modifying it based on some of the comments we received from Dr. Clemens.
Okay.
But when you're doing the visual itself, it's not gonna give you that exact, exact plant, you just find something similar. So we, we were using an evergreen hedge there for the visual simulation.
Could that just be a continuation of the vineyard on, in between the hairpin turn and the driving range?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I follow.
Essentially putting vines instead of plants.
For, for the hedge, you know, a continuation of the vineyard that's gonna be on the left-hand side of the hairpin turn and then. Cause you know, those maybe six feet tall, seven feet tall, it's not something that's gonna grow.
I guess my, my question is, do you wanna put anything there, or do you want to just leave it open, so you can see the entire golf course and, and the buildings now, I mean.
Yeah, I think your eye is naturally drawn to the distance, you know, to what's seen.
No, no, that's not true, not if you're a hunter, if you're a hunter, you look for the tree. They're right down the road.
And a bad hunter's looking for a rookill.
Depends, yeah.
Doing some rookil.
So, you know, we, we have the visuals prepared with the, with the hedge already. We'll, we'll just prepare the, you know, the visuals for, I think there's two pictures from there, there's viewpoint one and viewpoint three?
Two and three.
Two and three, we can do it without the hedge.
That'd be great, I just, I think that'd be a pretty good idea.
Then you want George to come to the next meeting and discuss all these issues?
At this point, yeah, well, July third, you'll have the materials out by then, yeah, why not?
Yeah, we should have all the visuals completed and submitted by the end of next week.
It's good, making progress to get all those comments answered and responses.
Well, it's great that it's being done that way too.
Excuse me?
It's great that it's being done that way, you know, instead of doing a million mediums, give it the tunnel, you guys are all getting together, you're working on all the issues, yes, 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 yes. And then we just, then we just reveal?
Correct.
That's, that's perfect.
It's efficient.
Yeah, it is.
Alright, do we have any else? Anybody else want to go? Need a motion, close the meeting.
We've got minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just have one second.
Thank you.
I did, yeah.
Have a good night.
Need a motion to approve? Hold the data?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from, so fifteen? From the fifteen. All in favor?
I'll make it second.
All in favor, alright.
Everyone review the training summer school.
Summer school?
Training summer, I didn't see that one. Through the email? I was in here last minute.
I don't remember going to any.
Yeah, yeah. And just so everybody knows, July third, I'll be on vacation.
Oh, by the way, I'm not gonna be here, you guys are like there. Yeah, so, Dave's gonna abandon shit, so. Dave might be on vacation. What are we gonna do then?
What are you gonna do?
Need a motion, close the meeting. All in favor?